Yeah. Thought you, I thought too much on it. Was I going to hand this one or did? I always thank.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so it is seven oh two, we can call the meeting to order. Do we have a flag?
Do you have a flag in this room?
Do we have anything close to the flag?
Screensaver?
Screensaver flag?
There you go.
Google it.
You have that?
Um.
Something?
American flag on Google.
There you go. Fabulous. Here we go.
Good.
Boss.
Oh, I didn't realize she had that up.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Alright, congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Okay, Commissioner AB. Commissioner Gillen.
Here.
Commissioner Hamgovia. Commissioner Lindsay, Marissa Lindsay. Commissioner Paul Lindsay. Chairman Rennie.
Here.
Commissioner Rosa.
Here.
Commissioner Racine LePierre.
Here.
Commissioner Galligan.
Here.
Commissioner Simi. And Commissioner Lucas. Hey, you have. You have six, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, five.
So just Hunter's online, right?
That's correct.
Perfect. Alrighty, can I get an approval of the minutes?
A second?
Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Wonderful. Um, public participation. No one else is on at all, right?
Matt is online, but he doesn't have standards.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Um, a Chamber of Commerce report.
Um, I have to be honest, I have been involved in a couple of other things and I missed this week's meeting, so we have. What's coming up? We actually have. A ribbon cutting tomorrow night. Oh, I apologize, um. Ribbon cutting tomorrow night at Not a Phase, the new cafe on.
Oh, the streets.
What time is that? Five o'clock. So we'd love to show them our. Welcome, so if you can be there, it's a nice event, I'm sure they'll have some snacks and things to try. I have not been in there yet, I've heard lovely things.
You haven't, it's adorable.
I have not, I have to stop in and Maria Parker, I used to work with at Ravis, her grandmother.
Oh, okay.
She was very excited about it. Um, what else is coming up with the chamber?
It's cut, just.
It's a quiet time, we just finished the waterfall festival, so. Yeah, so I think everything quiets down right now, there'll be some ribbon cuttings and new businesses in town, but yeah, I'll try to post that.
And you guys, um, headed up the trick or treat stroll, so thank you for doing that.
Oh, that's right, how did that go? I took.
Oh my gosh, so every, just so everybody knows, every year they usually advertise that it's a thousand kids, they got twelve hundred this year.
My son went down to the fire department, that was nice, I saw some pictures.
Very nice, and I, I was pleasantly happy that people made it down to Karma's too, so we had about three hundred kids come down.
Awesome.
And so I think with the town being in the old OFI building next year.
Oh, yeah.
That would be really great to do something in that parking lot.
Okay.
And because there's so many kids, we need to spread it out even more.
Unfortunately, I think there, people are choosing that over trick or treating nowadays, and so having those things are being more and more.
Well, and it's a major community event, it's, it's like the cutest parade, it's the cute, they literally like appear out of nowhere and for two hours, they're having a great time.
So I'm sorry I didn't come down for that.
That was very good, you can come next year, don't worry.
I promise.
Alright, um, yeah, we don't have a lot of people here today, so, um, it might be quick meeting, guys. Uh, so old business, we have the welcome letter. Um, so we did have, I, I sent mine at like two o'clock today, maybe?
I got three today.
Did you? Okay, better late than never.
I got Hunter's app yours and then Jonathan just fired me off a few minutes ago.
So I'd be both of them, that's good.
I, I will be several.
But those would be only ones I received at this late date.
Yes. Okay, so did, so we need to make sure that everyone got the email, saw the email. Eric made it very clear, I believe the email was October second.
Yeah, grab it, live media.
Yep, so if you have to go back, um, and, um. Eric made, uh, it very clear, has our names and which businesses, um, for you to do. And I found it super easy, I literally, I did, so just as an example, I did Steve's Place and Public Market. So I literally went on their website and took like three words from it, and of course I've eaten there, so that was pretty easy, but. Um, you know, like literally, I think I did like three, four sentences for each, so.
Okay.
Dude, I think Gail had a comment.
Because. I mean, one of the businesses we already had retired already, it was gonna be like nothing built or whatever.
Oh, yes.
I mean, and everybody's busy, and we have busy too, and I get it, but do we have to wait till everybody gets theirs in? Why don't we just set some up now? And I'm sorry, if there's a different business complaints, if they didn't get one, well.
We're working on it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should get them out now.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll get what I have together and.
I know people. I mean, it, it, we're gonna be waiting for them to last, my opinion.
I totally understand what you're saying.
And then what did we decide? Do we have a master list of which ones have gone out? Are we keeping track of them?
Well, the ones.
Hi, Marissa.
Anyway.
On this side.
The lists that I sent you were the ones that were still open.
Okay.
So everybody has ones that are open. So, and I have the other ones that I've already done, I just have to say something about me, I texted ones that Gail did.
Are we, we're keeping track of them?
I have, yep, I have a list.
Thank you. Okay.
From where you get me the email, I'll try and push something out before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And if we do another batch in December, all the better. I'd, I'd love to wrap it up, I need to get on.
Okay. Alright.
Then we can concentrate on, the new business is open in twenty-five, we can get those letters out beginning twenty-six, just.
Okay, okay, so please, if you have not done your letters yet, and I can get with you after, Eric, if, if, you know, I can do a couple more. Um. Um, please let us know, and if you're not gonna do them, please let us know, so that we can assign them to someone else, so that we can get this done, so. Thank you, uh, classic letters.
Kind of haven't done ours, but we will be.
Yep, we're gonna give everybody one more month to finish and.
I'm behind as well, Marissa.
Honestly, if you, if you can do it this week, that would be great, that way we can get them out, but we'll have at least. Sounds like six or eight.
You know, ten, that's right, you gave me two.
Yeah.
Probably fifteen or so.
Yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen, we can get out.
Yeah, so if you wanna get those out, and then this next batch that all these guys do, we can send out in December or whatever, does that make sense?
Okay, cool. Alright, very good, anything else on the welcome letters, or welcome, I guess we're calling it welcome letter, right?
Yeah.
Even though we're doing the classic guys first, yeah, perfect. Alright, passport, I think this is gonna be the bigger one, this. Um, so I shot out an email, was it yesterday or today?
It was yesterday.
Um, with the list that we have so far. Um. So it comes to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Didn't Tiffany add one too?
Um, I think I have it on there.
Okay.
Paul has one. And.
Oh, yeah, what did you tell me?
Wine and Spirit Shops.
Thank you.
He's on, is that what, is that what it's called? Wine and Spirit Shops?
I believe that's what it is, in up in the plaza across from Burger King.
Okay.
Um, Manic Island Plaza.
Right. Could you, um, get me the address when you have a second, I don't wanna.
Sure thing, he also said he'd put a twenty-five dollar gift certificate towards the prize.
Awesome, thank you so much.
No problem.
Alright, so, um, so if anybody needs any more of the old ones.
I need at least.
Wanna go do some of these?
I have not, not got to get one from you, so. I'll give you a few.
Do you want two names for your list?
Sure, what?
Um, timeless tanning is in.
I already put them in.
And Laser Max.
Laser Max, good.
Okay. And I just, I have to.
Is it laser spelled funny? Oh, no, it's that X, Max, that has.
Yeah, that's changed, it used to be Laser Quest.
Right, well, it's two Xs.
Oh, yes.
But I needed to make sure, I guess.
And they actually are gonna give us two gift certificates, so I just have to email him and give him all the details.
Awesome.
One for you, Jack.
There you go, one for you, Jack, that's good.
Alrighty. Um, so, we have them so far, how many? Thirty-four, five, six, one, and so we had thirty-six last year, what, what did I, how many did I say?
Twenty, about twenty-seven, I think you just.
Oh, really, already?
You said twenty-five, so now I think it's twenty-seven.
Okay, and I got a couple more to put on there too, like I just heard back from Chick-fil-A and.
Okay.
And Chick-fil-A wants to offer free fry for anyone that goes in and get a stamp, so I'm trying to think of how to put that on there. Like if I put it in their stamp.
Or I'm wondering if it's like, it could be on the website, you know, like maybe it doesn't have to be on that, or, or, or we're not, well, is it on the, um.
You could put free fry.
We didn't get it up on the, we got it up on the town website last year, so we can get it up there this year, right, yeah.
And, you know, and list the places that are offering freebies?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think a lot of people are getting their passports like from us.
Okay.
So just trying to think if it should be in their stamp.
Okay.
Or how much is it to, to sign it, if you put?
Oh, this, it doesn't look like this.
Put the.
This is only last year.
I'm wondering if you put like the freebies on.
Yeah, so is there a space to put a list on the back?
Middle. Maybe you put this free, freebies, whatever, who I was giving away freebies there, cause that's only at the spot.
We could. Or do we just put it in the thing, like?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the stamp, but it could be what's printed there, Chick-fil-A free fry.
Could we, um, uh, I do, is, are they gonna be the only ones? So I was wondering if like you just put like an asterisk or a star in those ones specifically? Like if there are multiple ones giving freebies?
They're the only one that like told us.
Okay.
That's the other thing, is like, other people might be doing things, we just don't know.
They haven't made up their mind yet, they have, yeah, and so like, do we wanna put that on here, or?
It's a surprise!
If, if we knew, then I think it would be like, you could put a, you know, there's a symbol on there, like an asterisk, star.
Yeah.
And I think it'd be more of incentive for people to actually go around too.
I know, so I think I do wanna put it on their stamp.
Okay.
Right?
I think that would make sense.
Somewhere, if we're able to, if we know it in advance, because when are we starting, the fifteenth?
So this starts the fifteenth, so we have to get all of the businesses. Done, today is the fifth and it's Wednesday. Um, and we have to get these to them next week, so I think our deadline needs to be, um, like this weekend.
Is there like a mailing list for all of them that we could send out all at once?
An email list?
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
We're not that. That's why I've been walking door to door.
That's why we need a, we need a paid person to be at least half time to run this.
That is correct.
The economic development, so we have to make a pitch for that.
Yeah. Um, in the meantime. Um, I, it's also very easy, if anyone would like, I went through yesterday while I was working the election in my spare time.
Was it election yesterday?
I'm pretty sure there was at least one. And I literally just went through. And so like Venus Nutrition, I sent them a picture of the passport and literally this thing. Hi, it's passport time again, cause they were on it last year, right, so it's a little bit easier with these guys, but even so. You could just send it to them, this year the passport will run from November fifteenth to the thirtieth, anyone who comes by, please give them a stamp. You're welcome to offer them a deal or discount, that's up to you, this is free to be part of. But we are asking if businesses could donate a gift card for the winners, please let me know if you have any questions, or if we can add you this year. And she said, um, ah, yes, we're interested in joining again this year, we can give a gift card for a free drink. Great.
Well, if, when people go around talking to people, we have a clipboard where we just get the, the name, the address, and then an email. So when we're passing these out, we get all that, so this way next year, you just. Email everybody.
If you want, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you. Yeah, it's not gonna matter, you, we have to go, you have to go and see these people, or just message them. I don't.
Yeah.
As a business owner, I don't have time, I have to read my social media DMs. Like, you know what I mean?
Business owner or not?
I'm just letting you know, it's a lot.
You're the business owner, not me.
Okay, yeah.
I believe you.
So basically where we're at for right now is in a good position, we, I'd like to get at least, you know. Eight more, so that we're at least where we were last year. But we definitely still have room for more.
For a couple more, okay.
Alright.
Did we get the five of them this year?
So I have an email out, nobody's responded to me, I'm sure with everything that, you know, the, the elections, I will pester somebody again tomorrow.
Like, do you want me to go knock on the door to?
I will say that that was really hard for people to get that stamp, because they're only there like ten to twelve, or ten to two or something.
Nothing.
Oh.
So maybe, maybe it's not.
It's the head office.
Yeah, but maybe there's not a reason to have.
So, it's nice that they wanted to be a part of it, but I will tell you, the people that wanted to build this, oh, they were like, I couldn't get there. I'm like, I'm sorry.
After thinking about it, they don't sell anything, it's nice to visit.
It's a service, but it's on demand basis.
Alright, let me see who else we can fill some spots with.
Okay. But if they wanna do it, let us know.
Okay.
Or maybe we put that in there.
Yeah.
Like, cause there are super different times, I know we're not gonna put everybody's hours.
A bonus square, there you go, you get that, you automatically go around.
That's actually good.
Um, so along those lines, just to harass you some more, I still need an updated quote. For the printing.
I sent it to you, I told you it's cracked, even though it says white paper, it's the same.
Or color, this says color, that's why, okay, that's correct, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Seen that response, okay.
No, that should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Okay, so please let me know by Sunday. Who else is going to be on this, um, I will give her all the information Monday. It's too, that's too late, I feel like it's too early. Well, it's already Wednesday, what are we gonna do? So if you give it to me, so I'll send her what I have, so she can at least get all that started, and then we'll just do any last minute, any more that we get. And then I'll ask her to run it Monday.
Did you hit all the recent ribbon cutting?
Did I hit all the recent?
I can get a list from the chamber and see if I can do that. Yeah, having been visible.
So Not, Not a Phase is, is in, that's one that you're asking about, but yeah.
Collect list of new businesses.
Definitely go, I know Paul was gonna do, please definitely go to Casodoro.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully get them included.
Sorry, I've, I've helped on two committees in both events for last week and this week, so after this weekend, I should be able to.
I know, we'll be too late for that.
Alright, let me see what I can do.
This week.
Yes, okay, so. Get me everything by Sunday night, please, so I can email her Monday.
Okay.
And she can add in the last minute ones, and then hopefully she can run them Monday.
Alright, I might be able to do that Friday during the day, tomorrow or Friday, let me see what I can do.
And then I can probably pick up everything from her, or I can have Tiffany or you pick up everything from her on Tuesday.
Okay.
And then we can get them back out to everybody, so we can. If they need them by the fifteenth.
Alright, and you had asked me about some sort of.
Yeah.
Tracking, okay. This is open for improvement. But my thought process. So this is probably gonna wind up being two or three pages, I left them bigger so we could fill it in. Address, the stamp that belongs to the business, the number of passports, if we go back a second time.
Gotcha.
Number of additional passports, and then. So you're gonna drop it off to the business and stamp on this page what stamp you gave them. And then whoever is the first stamp on the page gets circled by whoever puts them up.
I need by the circle.
So if it starts at Karma's Closet and you are the first stamp, you circle it, and that way we know where it originated. Were we trying to track how many came from each place?
Yeah, Jonathan had a good idea, just stamp the back of each passport.
With the original.
Oh, that's fine, either way, just so there's an iden, a way to identify, cause at one point we were talking about like marking it or initialing it.
Yeah.
Try to make it as easy as possible, okay.
That idea is perfect, um, Tiffany is gonna order the stamps.
Okay, so she's got that under.
Say all that, yeah, but yeah, we said, want, like, basically if we give you laser, you know, you're gonna get Laser Max, you're gonna get. Um, timeless tanning, so when we hand you those, you just go through stamp them all real quick.
Okay.
Because we can't depend on the business owner to do that, unfortunately.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, if you deliver them stamped, I think it's probably better.
Stamp it safe for me, yeah, some kid working in the shop hands.
So why don't I say this?
Yep. Then throw away the little paragraph.
Hopefully what we can do then is get pronto everything, and they can either print Monday or Tuesday for us. So then either Wednesday or Thursday morning, why don't a bunch of us meet at Community Room? This is what Tiffany and I and Matt did last year, actually, Matt, if you're on, um, we can meet at Community Room at like eight thirty or nine, divvy up everything. And then you have the next like two, three days to get everything.
Okay.
To the businesses, does that make sense?
Yes.
I'll be there.
Thank you, Matt.
Hey, Matt.
Alright, so I think I, I, I think I have everyone's number that's.
Here.
Involved in that, and so I have you, Paul's gonna be with you, I'll text Matt.
He can't come, but I'll come on once a week.
Got it, well, I'll let you know which day, cause I.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, we'll just confirm with pronto.
Yeah.
That they got everything.
How many squares are we gonna have if we have capacity on that? Did you say thirty-six?
No, we had thirty-six last year, this is more, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, seventy-two.
Okay.
Double.
Alright, so if I do front and back.
She made these a little smaller, you see, so that we had double.
Yep.
So, like, you know, we can make them, we can get.
And if you only have forty-eight this weekend.
Yeah, they'll be a little bit bigger.
Alright, so I'm gonna print these front and back.
Why don't you, as Marissa suggested, and we can try things.
Yep.
Add a list in there for maybe contact name.
Yep.
And email address.
And then if you do it.
Anything else we should have, yeah, if you, if you print them lancy, you could probably fit multiple, like a little bit more.
Alright. We'll do our best. See what we got.
Name and email is helpful, cause then you're at least starting a list of things that we can contact folks for, even if it's not the passport, but it's, you know.
Right, you start to build that data.
Right, exactly, and even though sometimes we might have to go out and say hi, we can always say we sent you an email and da-da-da, yeah.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't stop, but it makes it a little bit easier for us.
Not to put more things on this list, but is there a way that we can mark that you gave a gift card on this list?
Love it.
Yes. Alright, so like you said, if I turn it sideways, then we have room to put all the info, so even though. We'll see how, how that fits, and then adding another row for gift card. Okay.
Do we wanna add something for freebies too, or if they wanted to, like what Chick-fil-A's doing, or?
Yeah. Yeah, we wanna track as much as possible, right? Yeah, gift cards are freebie, and yeah.
Giveaway, basically.
Giveaway.
Kathy, if you wanna help make them, just post it, let me know.
Thank you. I have a terrible time printing Excel, I'm pretty good on Word if I just make a table, but Excel always bites me in the butt.
I love Excel, do you?
I have to get better at that.
I work at, at the office, I love it. So I do everything on.
Does it matter if it's Excel or just a table?
No, as long as.
Cause we're not totaling anything, right?
Yeah, if you just want.
Is that what this is?
You can do it.
Yeah, cause if you, if you use Excel, you can just select the print area that you wanna do, and adjust, adjustments on the page setup.
Okay, I'll play with it and see. Okay.
It's funny, I would.
Cool kids would make us do Google Doc now, I think.
Well, I, so my bachelor's is mathematics, and we were talking about, you know, Excel, and they're like, this was basically created by computer scientists to make fun of, or like the, you know, impersonate mathematicians, and we were like, yeah.
Yeah. That's why I like Excel, cause it's equations and things.
I mean, I do that for my record keeping for business, but once I get past that, it's like, I don't think I need that for this.
Gotcha.
Okay.
No worries.
Alright, I'll see what I can do.
It'll, it'll give me a reason to try. If you have any questions, let us.
Okay. I know who to reach out to.
Okay, so it was. Alright, do we feel like we have a plan for the passport then?
Yes, I think so.
Right.
Yeah, put you into my calendar for Wednesday.
And literally, what, like making it optional, everyone is like, oh, I'll donate something, you know what I mean? Like, yeah, Venus Nutrition, I don't know if that means like a small gift card, or like just one free drink, like either way, great. It's something.
If you, if you come to them with the offer of you wanna participate, then the offer of freebie on top of it, then it becomes just a little bit incremental, so.
Yeah.
So incentivize to do that.
Alright, cool. Hunter, are you good with that? I know we talked about, I thought. Um, if you, if, if you need any of last year's. Um, I think you were gonna be, oh, you want some of these?
Please.
Um.
Thank you much.
Yeah, totally. I think, Hunter, you said you were gonna do, um.
Yes.
Okay. Oh my god, I can't think, Public Market area?
Yeah, yeah, I can still do that, um, I'll be in the area, so I can stop by. Um. Or if you send it to me, I can print some out, but I can try and stop by tomorrow.
Yeah, no worries, I'll have them, do, do you live in that neighborhood? Cause I live in that.
Yeah, I'm on, um, Dix Avenue by the fire company.
Oh. Oh, so the other side, um. So you're, like, near Manol?
Yeah, New, New Britain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quite literally on the New Britain line.
Okay.
So when you.
Oh, yeah.
And you get to back, you know.
Yeah, 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 town line, town line, they really like town line, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that neighborhood.
I'm on Bramble Off of.
Okay, you're the.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll coordinate, I can.
But yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Um, or if you want me to just message you a picture, or whatever works.
Um, let's do both, you can send me a picture and then, uh, if I need printed copies, I can grab them.
Sounds good. Oh my gosh, this is last year. Um, okay. Alright, so we're good there, let's just keep communicating the next few days and make sure we're, we're, we get it done. Okay, any report on the Hobby Odyssey?
Um, I did get to meet and talk with Sonia briefly on a phone call about, uh, the logic models, and I think we just talked about the fitness for February as an initial concept idea. And she had somewhat of a put together, not really fully vetted out logic model, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, it was pretty good, and we just talked about, um, kinda putting that a little bit on the side just to work on the passport, did you, were you guys meeting with her last week? Um, it was pretty good and we just talked about um kinda putting that a little bit on the side just to work on the passport. Did you, were you guys meeting with her last week?
So Tiffany and I did meet with Sonia, yes, and went over a couple of things.
Yeah, but that was like the passport or like the branding at all, or was it meeting?
She more so was just asking us like what one we thought would make more sense to do first. And I said, well, the passport is happening now and we're getting you information.
Yep.
So and we won't need, you know, grant money until like next year, basically.
Yeah.
So that's not really, I'd rather you focus on the Odyssey or the branding. Um, but then we fell into issues with the branding because now the town just did, redid the website. Um, so it kind of got all over the place.
Okay, cuz I, cuz my doctor beforehand, um, it was, I think it was the week before that, I wasn't able to meet with her on when you guys met, unfortunately, but it was um.
Right.
Uh, like I think, did she have a logic model that she was talking about for the passport program? And I think that's why I talked to her about was seeing if the logic model as like a test case with the passport program, seeing how it adapts, seeing everybody get familiar with it. Then using that almost as a template for the Hobby Odyssey as we develop that, so people are more familiar with, you know. So we're not going in blind to the logic model, moving forward into the Hobby Odyssey, I guess, if that makes sense. Kind of it's just like a test case for this is a methodology that we will apply for the Hobby Odyssey going forward. I don't know when the Hobby Odyssey, next year, like, cuz I think we're just uh maybe as a test case of two, three, maybe even four months throughout next year in twenty twenty six. Potentially as like looking for potential one month segments for the Odyssey that.
Perfect.
But um, but yeah, we're just gonna, basically the idea was just to strengthen and find a uh a a model that would would be the Odyssey. And then the hobbies hobbies would just be substituted and out. So I think we were just trying to focus and make sure that whatever the Odyssey looks like, that ship that we're gonna be moving it through is um as as detailed and planned as we can. So I think that was the kind of, that would be the logic model. So we wanted to have familiarity with it with the passport program to set a little bit of a touch with it and then moving into the Hobby Odyssey as an application so we're familiar with it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the Hobby Odyssey? Right. Onto the town branding. Hunter, do you wanna?
Yeah, so um I'm working through the logic model. Uh, we both got kind of the same email. So working through the logic model and the branding side, going through each category. And then hopefully I'm giving myself a deadline of this year to have something to review with all everybody. So um obviously that's next month, so looking to have something that we can we can look at, talk about, and maybe that's our our test case for the modeling of the Hobby Odyssey as well.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Of course.
Alright, do we have any new business? Okay. Then I think we're up to Eric.
Can't think of anything honestly off the top of my head for the my report. However, next month, you're meeting of the electing officers again and setting your meeting dates. To that end, it was discussed last year about possibly adjusting the day that this board meets. So in looking through the available slots currently, you guys are the first Wednesday of each month. So the first or third Monday will be available. Or the second or third Tuesday. Thursday, Thursday, sorry.
Wait, so we our, is our term up?
Not your term, but you just re like often these years, some 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 of you may have terms that are up. I don't, I have to look and see who's up and not.
Oh, okay, two year slot?
So it depends on if you, if they appointed you in somebody else's slot and their term expired, we'll say this year, that's.
Okay.
You you will likely get reappointed. That's not up to me, obviously, but you know, the parties will deal with that.
I don't even know how long we belong.
Are you able to find that out for all of us? And put an email like what our terms are up? Or who do we?
So you talk your party chairs.
They should be on the.
Gotcha.
Check out the website.
It should, I think I have.
I sit next to you. Gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha, I had to.
Real quick, I'll tell you these terms are up this year.
And is it December or is it?
No, very much.
So February. Marissa and Paul are up in November. Tiffany. Fernando and Kathy.
Wait, November like?
This year.
Isn't.
Your 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 dates are still good now cuz they're all posted. So typically, one of the next council meetings will do this mass reappointment, I'm sure, again.
But if you don't get, if you don't hear anything and it's like past November, you're still like on it, what do they call it?
It's called de facto.
The de facto, until you get officially replaced or reappointed, you're still on there, but you're at risk, not risk.
So Marissa and Paul, me and Fernando.
And Tiffany.
And Tiffany.
Paul's November, or is that?
Yes, all you guys are all up this year.
Okay.
Cuz I gave my resignation today to James.
Oh, okay. It's Marissa, gonna be.
Four hundred and fifty.
Oh, that's right.
I thought bad news.
Yeah, nervous.
That's right.
Oh, that's wonderful. Sounds good. It's for good.
Awesome. I'll still come again.
If you want to be, it's if you know that, you know, you're on that list and you still wanna stay, it wouldn't hurt to let your party chairman know that.
Reach out. I'm still interested, yeah.
Right. Okay.
So again, so if you, so I'm gonna have to make up the meeting, the proposed meeting schedule for the next month's meeting. So if you guys do want to switch it to one of those other days, should let me know tonight, probably. Just so I can work that out.
Are they all at seven or are they like six?
You can change it to six thirty or six if you want to. You could change, you could tweak the time of the day.
I'd rather do six or six thirty. By seven o'clock, I'd wanna want him down.
Yes.
But you know, obviously, everybody works.
Yep, yep, exactly. So I don't know what what everybody else's schedule is like.
I know there's only five of you here, but I know we did discuss it last year. We were talking about it, but at that point, just the night you're.
Can you say what our options are again? I'm so sorry.
First and third Monday.
Oh, Monday. I didn't hear that.
Third Monday.
Yep.
Or second and third Thursday. And I'm adjusting this because of meetings that I already have to attend.
Yep.
Otherwise, you know, it was.
No worries.
No, I'm just saying so if you had, when you can have a person in the future, they might be able to do it on a different day that's more meaningful to everybody else.
Right.
Be as a mayor.
But today, but this time is still an option. Those are just.
Yes, yeah, then you can still keep on this, this this day and time perfectly fine. Sorry, yes.
So I would stay away from Monday because it, I I will say, I'm on the youth adult council and we do the first Monday of the month and it's always getting changed because of the holidays.
Yeah.
And yeah.
And I'm not a fan of Thursdays cuz I feel like more stuff happens on Thursday nights for social activities.
So if.
Oh.
Well, but.
So.
Well, it's only once a month.
Yeah, yeah.
So you could leave it at Wednesdays and adjust the time, maybe that.
I'll point for everyone.
Well, I, at the moment, I'm hosting a book club at six o'clock on the first Wednesday of the month. Are we able to go do a different Wednesday of the month or it has to be the first Wednesday?
Uh, yeah, other Wednesdays have TPZ.
They're taken. Got it. So is anyone else supposed to Thursday at six o'clock?
No, I could make that work.
We could figure it out.
Is that the first or?
Oh, I don't know. Second of the year.
Second or third.
Second of the third.
So the second or third Thursday at six.
At, I don't know my calendar for next year on that specific information. I think I'll power through.
Hunter, do you?
Uh, no, no um issues on most of the times or days. Um, Tuesday's the hardest for me. That's when I go to the office in Norwich. Um, but so Thursday, I would argue for the second Thursday cuz then we're still kind of talking about the month that we're in as opposed to the if we're on the third Thursday, then we're talking about the following month, whatever we're talking about.
Good, yeah.
That might be tough too with the passport and specifically November next year, cuz we don't, I don't know, the second might be better than the third, but whatever. Just to get more time in before we do that one, cuz I know this is a big interview we did, so just.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Alright, I think I think the second Thursday at six, um.
We do know how to do a, what is it, a doodle? I can do a doodle.
A doodle hole.
Do a doodle hole for all the members.
Um, I think we just did.
Okay, person. Okay, as long as that's fine.
So I'm good with that.
If you snooze, you lose.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Alright, works for me.
Easy peasy. Great. Cool. Don't make it. So does this mean literally next month? December?
No, we've already set no. The meetings through this year already sat and the first one for.
January is that.
January's already set.
So we're talking February.
February it'll start.
February.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
The second Thursday.
Is February twelfth.
Whatever, yeah. Uh, but I will bring that proposed schedule to the next meeting. You'll have it as part of the package the next week.
Okay, got it.
So we'll have to vote on it anyway.
So we'll go down it then, so this is just our idea and then we can.
Second Thursday, six P M.
Six P M. Excellent. Do you have anything else to report, Eric?
Otherwise, um Taco John's is under construction. Been getting a few calls recently about the old Bob's store. It is on the market. I'm hearing it's listed at two point five.
Oh, the furniture, Bob's furniture.
Eight point five.
That's what I've heard. I haven't, I haven't checked on.
That's my bridge range. I can do.
So it's, you know, we'll see what kind of potential redevelopment or if someone's just gonna kind of take it over for the same type of use it's gonna be. The tough parts will work with, it's kind of small.
Mm hmm. Right.
For what anybody don't want on the turnpike, i.e. drive through.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, so.
Right. Not with fifteen feet of E pass, I think, or fifty? What is it? Is it fifteen or fifty?
Well, yeah, they have they have the buffer there too and they already have apartments in the state right away, so like, yeah, so it's.
Super cool. Um, the grocery store is moving. You don't know that for sure. Price Shopper, sorry.
It's Market Thirty Two.
Market Thirty?
Yeah, they're uh.
Is that next to the um, uh, was it the milliard departments? There's a marketplace there. Oh.
Yep.
Keep traveling by that place.
It's not, I mean, I've had discussions with uh for many companies in regards to signs, so they're moving forward. I just don't know what their timetable is. Um, and I do not know how long or the status of the Price Shopper will be when it does open. I don't know if it's gonna be closed or if it's gonna keep going open a bit. I I don't suspect that they would, but. The Stop and Shop still runs two stores in town, so.
Yeah.
So. Portable housing apartments were approved on Kids Lane, next to the Stop and Shop there. We got to do a lot of finalizing of uh plans, final approval. End of construction timeline. Too much this fall, we might finish the demos in the existing building.
What, are they building like in that plaza or?
No, there's a, if you go, you're heading up Kids Lane up the hill on the left, there were two houses that have been for sale for.
Uh.
They've been for sale that long?
So I started here, yeah.
Wow.
Just like the uh the hole right next to Walgreens, that thing's always for sale.
Uh.
Cuz it's all wetlands. I don't.
Right. Billboard.
They can't build any more billboards.
Oh, that's to Walgreens. So is that across the street or behind it?
Right, right, next to Walgreens. On the turnpike, seventy three.
Oh, yeah.
Like literally in front of, yeah, it's like the billboard, a whole bunch of wetlands and then Walgreens.
What could you do with that?
Had a couple people call, they just wanna sell them. And then have you looked at the property? Well, no, I said, you know, it's like fifty feet below rate in the road.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But then again, so is Chili's.
Yeah, that wasn't, I mean, that whole thing got developed, it went through approval process.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah, I don't say never, but I just, you know, be prepared, it's going to be long type of thing, I wouldn't wanna do.
Okay. Everybody keeps asking me um behind the Starbucks on Fenn. That's the Starbucks and the hotel and then another apartment. That's an apartment, yeah.
There's a market rate apartment, so I think there's, I think there's ten, ten or four units in that building.
And then a parking garage.
It's a parking garage and the apartments there, it's all in sight.
Oh, gotcha.
This will be one piece of developable land behind the car wash that's still.
Okay. Other than that, all of that is developed now.
Wow. How big is the parcel that's not?
Maybe half an acre from them.
Have we gotten any hits in the center of town? Or anything? Mostly, is it, so is the hospital first hit? Where we at?
I believe it's, I mean, they pulled it off, they marketed it originally. I don't know if it's, I haven't checked to see if it's back on.
Okay.
I think they're probably having more discussions with developers and reaching out to them now since we, the master plan's at the end. Um, obviously, there's still things we have to do for the master plan. I mean, you know, if we adopt this plan, great. Then there's gonna be um zone changes that are gonna have to occur, you have to be amendments to the regulations for the town to just kind of amend what the town wants to see there, you know, what the developer necessarily wants to do. Partnership at some point in the future.
Gotcha.
Everything will be according to plan? That's about all I have unless you guys have any other specific questions that I could answer. Glad we do so.
Any any hits on the dry cleaner, the old dry cleaners?
So, you know, they, when they did some work, they did some renovation, which is what the the guy, the family that owns it, he came in. Said that's what he was gonna be doing. He said, okay. Talking about some different potential things, but he was just starting, so. Foundation's done, so I don't know how they're marketing it at the moment.
Pickleball's still in best market, so that's going good.
It is, yeah.
Any other questions?
I asked them, what about the pickleball that's supposed to be going on?
So there was a post on Facebook from Newton Scoop that said they weren't going in. I I haven't heard anything either way. They 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 finalized all their approvals, they filed all their plans, filed all their permits. They put up a sign. I don't believe they moved forward. I think they even filed the building for. But.
And also I think that restaurant.
Restaurant's still moving forward. There's a lot of activity that they're working on. So long story short, so they filed all the approvals, so all that needs is somebody else to come in and run a pickleball place or in other places for this collectivity. I have not heard anything from the developer of Pickleball City.
Um, Chris is the gentleman who runs Newton Scoop. Just to clarify, cuz we forgot his name. Um, he is very nice. He reached out to me recently and said that we are more than welcome to literally read off of his stuff, so I'm literally just gonna read a couple things cuz these are some new businesses in town. Ready? Um, Ake Me Cuero.
Yep, I'm aware of that.
Um, I can't wait to try that. It's, is that, that's the old Doogees, right?
Yeah, no, not the old Doogees, uh Chef Dog House.
Chef Dog House, I'm sorry.
It's a really good restaurant.
Have you tried? I'm so excited cuz they were in Hartford before.
This is like, I think it's like the third restaurant.
Yeah.
They have two other.
Yes.
Restaurants.
Awesome.
All here, I knew in Park Street.
Awesome. It's Puerto Rican.
Mm hmm.
Um, so that is over on Willard, um next, it, where Seven Eleven is, same plaza.
Yeah.
Um, Zam Zam Market is now open at thirty ninety-five Berlin Turnpike. Their Halal Market, selling groceries, halal meat and fresh bread, three oh nine five.
It's at the very end of the opposite end from Radio Shack. Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's the karate studio though.
Yes, close to Ollie's.
Radio Shack.
Right next to Ollie's.
Radio Shack's still up there.
We went in there a bunch.
Yes, we were shopping.
It's on that one all the way at the opposite end.
We, I looked at that a few times and so Kathy brought me in there, um. It's very cool. It's very weird to go in there. Um, The Wonder Lab with Mrs. Gomes. If you guys don't know Mrs. Gomes, she has always been Mrs. Gomes on the go. Um, she lives in town, she's raising five kids in town. And she now has her own Wonder Lab. She's upstairs on Market Square?
She's in, I do not know where she, I I don't remember her unit number, but yes, she's in that one building.
Yes.
Where is the Wonder Lab?
So she does kids things, right? So she always has done like Mrs. Gomes on the go, so like meet at the park and do sensory play. Or over the summer, she was doing um kids, excuse me, sensory play classes on the patio.
Yeah.
And now she has her own space, so she'll be able to do classes for kids during the day. She homeschools her kids. So other homeschool families can come together and do things like that during the day. But she'll also offer, I think, like probably private parties and birthday parties and stuff like that. Lot of things for the kids.
When you said kids things, I was like taxes and I was like, oh, I am bull.
Right? Yeah. Right, yeah. And then Mama's Pizzeria is now open on New Burton Ave, it was, I forget what it was.
Village Pizza.
Thank you, um, so they just opened over there, so he just posted all that yesterday.
It's a whole new owner.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, it's, uh, I just talked to him, Rui is the guy's name, it's all the guy and them.
Oh, it looks like she's, I think, uh, Mrs. Gomes is in the one hundred building upstairs.
Okay. Yeah, she has a couple.
That's what they posted. Yeah, very cute. Seeing if he put anything, oh, Taco John's, oh, we're the first location in Connecticut.
Taco John's? I wanna know how he gets all this info.
He's a reporter.
He's got his. This Chris kid.
Alright, any other public participation?
No one online has their hand up.
Okay, any commissioner comments?
I was gonna joke and say like, you know Disney World, you know Disneyland, but with the hospital, why not Disney Suburbs?
Disney Suburbs.
It's a, it, I'm throwing it out, I'm talking, was it Mike Iger, is that the name of that? I'm talking about, with that.
I mean, we're the first Taco John's, why not first Disney Suburbs?
Yeah.
You hear six flights for around five.
Four and a half, four and three quarters.
Oh my god, right, alright, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
You're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thanks.
Bye.